Four, three, six, so I'm on it now.
I think you're on.
Oh, all right, we're live. Right, let me know as soon as we're live.
No, I'm pretty sure I'll be fired for this.
There's. You're gonna be picked up, Madison. Thank you. Sam, could you please call a meeting to order?
At a quick notice, this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by transmitting the meeting notice to the official newspaper, providing a copy of the agenda to the newspapers and posting a copy of the agenda app for a while.
Thank you, Sam. Can I have a roll call, please?
Doherty?
Here.
Here.
Howard?
Here.
Meyer? Reading?
Here.
Reno? Kamco?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Demblicher? Apple?
Here. I do want to note for the record that both the mayor and John Demblicher let me know ahead of time that they would not be here because they are ill. Moving on to the third item on the agenda, could we move on to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of January twenty second, twenty twenty five? Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes as presented? I'm moving. Okay, Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. If there's no further comment? Could I have a vote, please?
Doherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Kamco?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes. Moving on to item four, resolution just regarding the application of Dunk Striker, Douglas Striker. There was an amendment to that resolution that went out this afternoon.
Yes. The members of the board John Delaney, who had this conflict council on this matter, Darlene, our planner had submitted a note with regard to what her notes reflected as far as conditions for approval was that the applicant would meet required tree replacement requirements. And the outdoor air conditioning units would be shielded with landscaping if they were placed on the side of the buildings. So I added that language into additional approval number six. And I just sent the board secretary a copy of it and also Darlene.
Yes, very good. And sorry about this. You should have been sitting up here for this.
No, no problem.
Need to identify yourself for the records.
He's our, he's our conflict attorney.
Okay, that's right.
John Delaney at that conflict council.
Yeah, because our attorney is conflicted out.
Conflicted on this one.
Okay.
And Ted Branson needs to step down because he has.
I saw he was representing the.
No, 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 we're just, we're just getting used to being in person here. That's all.
You're, you're okay.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're just approving the resolution. I so. The attorneys say it's fine. You can just sit there, Ted. Thank you. So having said all that, are there any other comments on the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you, Jean. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We still have form. We do still have form. That's good. Could, if there's no further discussion of the resolution, could I have a vote, please?
Doherty?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Kamco?
Yes.
Yes.
Very much.
Thank you very much, John. Got that done quickly and Ted's coming back. Ted got his desk in.
Thanks, John. You never get on the show.
All right, moving on to public comment portion of the meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone here to speak for the board, to the board on something not on this evening's agenda, this would be the time to speak. I see we have one member of the audience who you're here to speak about something not on this evening's agenda, sir?
My name's John Gaman and John Demblicher had invited me to come today.
Yes, John did tell me that you might be here. I just didn't recognize the face. So if you would state your name again for the record and just let us know what you'd like to speak to us about.
John Gaman, it's spelled G E H M A N. And since John Demblicher knows that I have property that could be developed into low income housing, he asked me to maybe attend here tonight if you are going to talk about development in town.
We won't be talking about that in particular, but can you just perhaps give us a brief outline of where your property is? And that, and you're simply making it known that you were interested in possibly having that property involved in the affordable housing?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on four, seventh street. I know that's block one, but I forget. And I know that it is zoned now for RN eight. And so that's why I, well, I was just here to observe, actually.
Okay.
But I don't know. He said there's a need for development right now.
There is indeed.
And, and then I know my neighbor across the street where the Myers used to own, that is also possibly going on market too. And so it would be like a full block of Riverside property.
And those would, but the end of the country classics property there.
Yes.
Yes. So would it be acceptable if after this meeting, if perhaps I gave you contact information so that our planner could reach out to you?
Yes, if the meeting doesn't last too late.
Well, she wouldn't do it tonight, probably.
I could give you my card and you could send it.
That would be, do you have your card on you? We could just hand that directly to the planner. That would be wonderful.
May I ask a question? Because we use the term low income and affordable housing, which my understanding is are very different things. So.
I think you meant affordable house.
I think you meant for that house is zone for inclusion area affordable.
Well, since I know the difference, you could explain that to me.
Actually, there's a flyer on the borough website explaining what affordable housing is.
And, and Darlene, when she reaches out to you, can explain the situation as well.
Okay.
All right.
Who's Darlene?
This is Darlene Green, our planner. Sorry, Darlene Green, our planner.
Okay, good.
All right. Thank you very much, John. Thanks for coming this evening and letting us know your interest in that.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
I am looking for a developer.
Understood, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on then, closing the public comment portion. And moving on to the new business portion of the meeting, the draft licensing of temporary food establishment support. And so this all came in your packet. And this was brought to us by Borough Council. So this is for us to comment on. At this point is, are they looking for us to comment on whether it is consistent with the master plan or what, what's the, what's the process here?
I think they kind of just wanted your take on it for zoning purposes. I think there is a paragraph in there that does need to be corrected because I think the zone may have been wrong. But council wants to do this because obviously we have the brewery. They can't have food booked there. So if we do an ordinance similar to what Raritan did with their breweries and food trucks, it'll definitely make the payroll process a little easier. And then there's just like rules and regulations that they would have to like follow versus temporary retail food handling licenses. They're a little different. So that's like a pop up at the farmer's market versus a phone truck.
Well, I believe that this issue has come up previously as well as some of the festivals in town. The Business and Professional Association has looked to having food trucks and have been stymied in that because that is not allowed by our ordinance. So this will, this will take care of several different issues that have arisen over time.
Although if we're kind of general commentary, I mean, just reading this without that context as a self standing document, it seems like it might be designed to discourage, if not eliminate the possibility of food trucks. One quick example of five hundred dollar fee, I looked on that internet thing for similar sized towns and music towers. And the charges seem to range between fifty and eighty five dollars. There are also many, many, you know, if we have an event two weeks apart, it looks like a new license has to be applied for, for each of those events. If there's an event, you know, the town next door and then this town, they'd have to apply, you know, there's no reciprocity. When we have farmers markets, which were mentioned, we don't insist that all the fruits and vegetables be screened and covered at all times. But in a food truck, they do. So I mean, if I was a food truck operator, I might read this and go, well, I'm gonna have to find someplace else to operate. Even the opening purpose basically says, basically it reads to protect French Town against the evils of food trucks as opposed to saying to make sure that we're providing for safety and all that in town while, you know, expanding the options for people to enjoy the wonders of French Town.
I don't know that I read it as quite extremely as you did, but I also felt like it seemed sort of strangely restrictive when I have some notes, but.
I think some of this has to, I think some of this is, is, is state generated boilerplate language. Basically, the, there was language that allowed food trucks to be in craft breweries and then that was rescinded. And then it was worked over really hard and put back in place. So I think a lot of this is something that's been worked out at the state level. And I think some of these rules for keeping food covered and closed and all that, I think that that is, that is, that is simply, I think that's coming from sort of a state template. I'm not sure that that's true. And we can get that feedback back to the council in case that's not, I do think having, having worked with a couple of groups who've done this, I think reciprocity between municipalities is just not going to happen. That's just not how it works. But I think maybe to your point of the fee, maybe looking at that fee structure again and making it a little less, a little less onerous certainly makes sense.
If it's at the state level, do we actually need to repeat it for ourselves?
No, but it's, it's, it's a template coming from the state level. So it's, I think we can, we might be able to, to amend it. But a lot of this, I think, actually comes from having been at a farmer's market when the health department came in and showed up and decided to crack down on the people that were selling uncovered fruits and uncovered meats at a farmer's market. This is state health code language, I think, some of this. So a lot of what you sometimes see may not at farmer's markets think that they're, they're sometimes they get a little lax. So I think some of this, I don't know, but maybe the question that we put to council is where did a lot of this language come from? Because I don't know that.
Because this is a model on another town.
Correct.
Yeah, I think you make an excellent point. It does read that way, right? Because there seem to be paragraphs that are almost redundant. Again, you know, you need an annual license and then for every time you come, you need another license. And each piece seems to be, it does seem to be cut and pasted.
Do you know which, well, but that's how a lot of ordinances happen. You know, it's, it's, we don't need to re remake every ordinance. Okay, this is the one, this one from Raritan. Okay, yeah, that's the one that I've.
Yeah. Recently just passed this ordinance, could, obviously they have events with food trucks and the breweries.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is surprising one familiar with this ordinance. I didn't realize if that's was theirs because I knew they just redid it. So perhaps.
People have comments they should, how do we get them?
Well, I think they're, they're going to be captured in our minutes. So.
Well, that's our notes on.
So if it's if it's specific notes. If we've done markups.
Is it time sensitive? Like, should we get the feedback first and then talk about it again?
So I think they're trying to get this moved fairly quickly. One of the things which I was actually going to discuss much further down under comments is that a lot of the businesses in French Town right now are are suffering because the bridge that was closed between us and Milford for a long time, put a pretty serious hit on a lot of our businesses. Because it cut down on traffic going into town and we just got that back open and now the bridge to Pennsylvania is closed. So businesses in French Town are hurting. And I think I'm going to be having a conversation with the mayor and council president about ways that we can encourage French Town to support its local businesses because they really need it right now. So I think this is time sensitive from that point of view is that they'd probably like to get this in place before the spring season comes on.
There's a way to make it less restrictive, but also feels like it could help.
Less, less restrictive, less restrictive, but in, 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 in ordinances like this that come through, usually the restrictive bits on it are in response to something that some municipality has experienced.
Yeah.
So, you know, most ordinances like this are not written simply to try to make it as restrictive as possible. It's, it's them seeing the problems and, and fixing that problem, which is why it's very handy to actually use ordinances that have been developed by other municipalities.
Two, two points. There's also the flip side of that is there's a couple of provisions that seem to counter that. And again, again, seem like something in a, from a specific case. For example, if you're a US veteran, you don't apparently have to cover your fruits and vegetables or dispose of your trash. I mean.
Well, no, 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 no. No, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that regardless of the flow going.
Yes.
The person's listed in the section must comply with the substantive health and safety requirements of disorder.
Substantive is a subjective term. And so is the covering of my grapes substantive or not?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It's helpful. It means that they don't have to get yet another permit.
So why, so if I'm a veteran, I don't have to get another permit. If I'm not a veteran, I do have to, or a fireman.
But I'm pretty sure that's state.
Are veterans, well, are we sure that in French Town, we have different rules for firemen than for other, other folks?
Again, I believe that is, I think that is state law, but I'm not sure.
I would like some, I think.
You would like some clarity on that.
And it doesn't say that they have to need a different standard. It just, it's more, it's more about their permanent requirement.
Yes.
It's, that's all it is.
Well, again, I'm, I'm not sure again, not being, not having gone to law school. But when it says, you know, they have to be substantively in, is, is again, that is a substantively is a subjective term substantively means not entirely.
Steve, can you explain on this? Because you are an attorney.
There you go.
I am an attorney. I have not looked at this quite honestly. It's not a, not usually a planning board function unless it's a review for purposes of consistency with the master plan. And I, I don't know what the state standard for the licensing of these type of you know, temporary, temporary
food trucks.
Food, things, whether they're, that is a state exemption that applies or whether it's just something that the drafter of these ordinances intended to do to give a benefit to veterans and fire department people. I, I'm not aware of what the state, whether there's a state law on that.
Mr. Randy, I, I was, my guess is that a lot of this came from the public health code. I don't know that for a fact, but it sounds like it.
It, it reads that way.
So we have a board of health. I was wondering whether it would make sense for the council to ask the board of health to look at it. They, because, I mean, our job is to talk about planning and land use, right? Their job is to talk about some of those public health provisions covering fruits and vegetables. Like, that's kind of not our thing.
Yeah.
Or also whether that is Raritan's in Hunter County, right?
Raritan's.
Oh, so whether the county health statement looked at Raritan's.
Yeah.
Like, that would be interesting to know.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah. I would think they did.
Yeah, to Jean's point, right? If we were exempting from the licensing and the five hundred dollar fees to be respectful, you know, deferential to armed services personnel, you know, that, that's one thing. But again, that, just the word substantive, it doesn't say have to otherwise comply. It says have to substantively comply. And that, why is that?
I think that's just how rules are written.
Why is that?
I think that's just, I think that's just boilerplate language.
Why not just say they have to comply? Period.
Well, because they don't have to comply with the administrative requirement in terms of the permit. They have to comply with the substantive elements of the country.
Right.
So let's, 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 let's walk this back just a little bit here. Borough council did not ask us to rewrite this ordinance. Council who sets ordinances in the borough has asked us to look at this and give them some feedback. I think our general feedback that I'm hearing is that one, it seems potentially overly discouraging to food trucks. And that perhaps there is a way to change some of this language to make it more encouraging for business in the borough.
What the question is, is how much wiggle room is there anyhow? Like, or is this pretty much?
We don't know. And, and.
So that's the question.
And that's another question. And, and, and there may not be wiggle room because of health code.
Right.
You know, a lot of these things may be required or may not be required by health code. The language about, you know, under four, three, A, six. B is, why is the word substantive in there instead of just requirement? That's another question. Lowering the fees, I think, would make it much more friendly. You know, I, I had also noted that, that I thought five hundred dollars was a little steep when I hit that myself. But I don't know, I don't know why they said it at that level and they probably have reasons for it. And it may simply have been, that's, it may simply be what Raritan used. So those are the three excuse me, general things that I'm hearing that we're looking at as being, that this might be more discouraging than they had in mind.
Are, are you okay with them only being allowed to operate at nonprofit and charitable events? Special events at the licensed premises of craft alcoholic beverage manufacturers?
Yeah.
I don't know what the special event.
Special event would be like River Fest or, you know, we have a lot of, we have an endless series of festivals that benefit our downtown.
But are they distinguished from nonprofit and charitable events? So let's say special event, it doesn't have to be a nonprofit or charitable event.
Correct, because it's the Business and Professional Association runs that.
To the interpretation of the.
So, but this would also cover, you know, a festival that someone wanted to run in Plessy Field, for example.
Would we potentially want to allow other food truck, like, let's say someone couldn't let afford a regular place in town? Would we want to allow a food truck that's just sort of regularly in the park that people?
That would be, that would be a whole different.
I think, I think, I think, I think that's actually, I think it's written specifically to discourage that.
Right. So remember the good humor truck. We're specifically saying no good humor trucks in French Town.
I don't know.
No, good.
I don't know.
I think, I think it is.
I like the good.
I, I think it is written specifically to discourage a business from setting up in a parking place, place that doesn't have a special approval and just becoming, turning in the parking spot. One of the parking spots at the park is now no longer available because a good humor man is parked there all the time. You know, I think it is specifically written to avoid that so that these are special occasion vehicles, not, not permanent, but semi mobile businesses in town.
And the title says temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Randy, I would just add to your list and going back to the council is whether they did or want to also share with the board how, the boroughs board.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yeah. So perhaps that can be the sum of our.
I hope some of them are here though.
Go ahead. Yes.
You can tell me.
Yeah, no, no, go for it.
Page three, item C, it says that the zoning officer will be the person to review the application. And I don't know that you, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, but your zoning officer reviews use zoning permits. This is a light of is a license. So I don't know if that person's really the right person. It's all going up to council.
Yep.
And then in that same C paragraph, I think this is what you were referring to, Sam, and the last, the third paragraph under C on the same page, it talks about where they can be located. And so my concern is, it says residential zone district or non residential zone district. Well, in the downtown, we technically allow homes.
Yeah.
So then is the downtown R four A, is that a residential district?
Yeah.
A non residential district or technically a mixed use district?
So that's problematic language.
So I think you were spot on with that in terms.
Darling, would you see just that they specifically, because again, this looks like it's cut and paste from another town. If they actually name the zones, should they just name the zones in this?
That.
The French town.
So that has pros and cons because if we ever change our zones, then someone has to remember the zones are cited
Yeah, yeah.
in this, and because it's not going in our zoning chapter.
Right, right, right.
I don't have a solution.
Okay.
Um, I just identified. You give me more time, I might think of something.
Well, that wording needs working on.
Yeah.
We'll just, we'll just say that wording needs working on.
Yes.
Well, I just want to follow up on what you were saying. The last sentence in the last paragraph under C on page three, S four, three, A, three. Food truck shall only be permitted at craft alcoholic beverage manufacturers licensed premises located in non residential zone districts. There's only one place a food truck would be allowed. With that definition.
Currently.
Yeah, okay. So, because that's really what the disordinance or this
Yes.
is fundamentally about is regulating the food trucks that are at wild.
Right.
And, and if that's really what it boils down to, John, then I think we just specify the zone that it's in.
Yeah, correct. That's a great point.
Okay. Because, you know, talking before about nonprofit events or something, and the way this is written right now, there'd be no food trucks at a BPA event at.
Right, that's, that. Yeah, if that, if what they're looking for is to also address events, which I was assuming, and I had missed the specific specificity of that last sentence. If they're looking to also address special occasions, special events for festivals and whatnot, then that language needs to be changed.
And maybe pointing out to them and maybe they, they didn't realize that discrepancy either.
Yeah.
I mean, at festivals where there's food like River Fest, that's accommodated under the permit for the event.
Right.
Temporary.
But, but, but they don't allow food trucks there, do they?
That borough does not allow food trucks.
Right. So I, I was reading this writ large as taking care of a larger problem, not addressing a simple, single business, but really looking at a larger problem, which is we have had there has been some talk in the town about getting food trucks in for some of the festivals that have run in town, run by the Business and Professional Association. And I was understanding this to deal with both of those problems, not simply, I mean, really written correctly. You know, if the school had some sort of a festival and they decide to have a food truck
Right.
written correctly, this could address this. You know, if we have, you know, a festival down in Old French Town Field and Plessy Field, this could address that written correctly. And I think that it should be.
But I think it's kind of up to the council to decide what they thought they were doing.
I agree.
Problem they were trying to fix.
But maybe that's what we need clarification.
Yeah, I mean, you know, what's the worst thing that happened? They could say, we didn't ask for your opinion on that. So if we think we have a valid one. On section all, and this may be, we're done with the making things too complicated, but as they said, when on four, three, A, paragraph three, again, prior to being included, it has to be, it has to be a hundred and county, you know, food certification inspection. And again, in terms of, I don't know what the state rules are for reciprocity, if they got that certification and were inspected for Lambertville on Thursday, are we going to say, well, if you're going to come here on Saturday, you have to get.
Where's this paragraph? Where's, where's, which, which paragraph?
I think, because each camp has their own temporary queue license.
Well, but this is Hundred and County.
Yeah. Which, which paragraph, please?
Here on section four, three.
Which page? Four?
Yeah, page four, sorry. It just, again, it's the county.
The county, the health department, right.
Right. So if they inspected it, do they have, so if I go to, if I'm a food truck going to three events in three consecutive weekends, I need three inspections.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
We should.
But that.
Didn't I just see you yesterday? Yeah, well, I'm back.
Yeah.
That's a point about the fee is that the county does charge the borough to come out and do inspections. I don't know what the county charges to inspect food trucks. So that could be why.
That might be why the fee was so high.
But I'm going to wonder in terms of margin, again, not being in the food truck business, five hundred dollars, how much profit is a food truck going to make in one day?
But that's, but that's the county board, department of health.
Well, if it is, right.
Not our issue.
Right. But again, we just need to know if that is indeed the case.
Yeah, no, it, well, yeah, if, if you're in three different places in the county.
You have to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how it works.
Yeah, that's what works.
Frickin' mortars have to pay fees as well.
Yeah.
Well, no, if I get, if I get a, I'm trying to think of an analogy, but to get re inspected for every time I do something by the same people is not.
But this is, but this is, this is a county law.
Right.
Like, there's, there's nothing that the French Town Planning Board can do about a requirement by the county health department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying that we have the authority to do that. I'm just pointing out that that seems like an unnecessary burden on a lot of parties and not particularly productive.
Maybe you must take care of it.
Yeah.
So maybe your name is not wrong on the left page. You're the last name, just so you know.
All right. Did anybody else have anything else specific that they wanted to, to call out on this? And, and Sam, are you going to be able to digest a list of this and give this to council out of all this? Thank you. Because I started taking notes, but I decided that that's what you do. All right. Are there any other specific notes then? I am really curious, you know, in a, in a, looking at the broader picture, you know, what and, and here I'm actually going to mimic wording that. And, and here I'm actually going to mimic wording that Marty uses sometimes, what problem they're trying to solve and whether or not this is looking at a broader problem or a very small problem.
Yeah, I have a question, because we have had food trucks at River Fest, the school has had a food truck at least once, when I've been there. Clearly, people did it.
Don't know.
They didn't get a permission. I've never seen a food truck license.
And food trucks are currently illegal in French Town.
Okay, so at River Fest, it was just illegal and it was fine.
Well.
Temporary, probably license.
Yeah, they probably got a temporary license.
Yeah.
So, so they, they probably went, ju- jumped through these hoops and did the health department inspection. But the way our ordinance is currently written, as I understand it, food trucks are not a thing. That can be in French.
Basically, it's ordinance is playing catch up at twenty twenty-five.
Possibly.
Pretty much what it's doing.
Because we have so many food businesses.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be part of the businesses, you will allow food trucks to start alive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Sometimes things happen and then someone returns around and realizes, wait, that's not allowed by ordinance. All right, I think we've got a pretty good list of feedback for council on that. If there is nothing else on that one. Let's move on, uh, to old business affordable housing committee update.
I'm a committee of one.
You're a committee of one, okay, um, so there was a memo that went around, um, from Albert Cruz, I know they're popular early in the month, but it was basically um, slimming down the affordable housing committee moving forward, um, so that we could be more nimble. And they were proposing that it was, um, basically the mayor, the council president, John Dougherty, myself, and John Demblicker and Darlene, um, trying to make it as small and tight um, as we can to try to move forward as quickly as possible. You know.
Do we even need a committee?
Uh, well, we, we're gonna need a little bit of feedback, yeah, I, I think it's gonna be, I think we're, I think we're gonna be in, we're gonna be supporting Darlene and, and, and having some that way we'll have both connection between the planning board and council and Darlene as this moves forward. What else have you got to tell us at this point?
So, the governing body submitted our binding resolution regarding our obligation to the state. We are now in the challenge window period, and the first challenges, uh, came in yesterday, but not here. Um, so everyone, of course, just like all the towns waiting until the end, now all the challengers are waiting to the end to file. So they have until midnight on Friday to file any challenge.
The thirty day window, right?
Yes.
Thirty calendar day window.
Yes, so hold your breath between now and midnight on Friday, and hopefully we won't, we will not receive a challenge. What it appears is, um, the builders have submitted a blanket challenge to anyone that, uh, submitted a lower number than the D C A number. Um, it is anticipated that Fair Share will do a similar challenge, and then it's a matter of, do you get any other challenges? From a vocal, could be a builder, property owner, et cetera, anyone can challenge. Uh, then the program is supposed to review all the challenges and adjudicate them within thirty days. I don't think that is likely, because four hundred and thirty, give or take, towns filed. Only about two hundred and eighty accepted the D C A number. So, we're talking about.
A lot of challenges.
Go vote of challenges. That a panel of retired judges is, are going to sift through. So I am hopeful that you'll be able to fly under the radar, we won't get challenged, because if you don't, then your number is established on March first by default, whatever we had in our binding resolution, so it was a refresher, we had a rehab obligation of eleven and a fourth round obligation of twenty-two. There still is the prior round, which is two, and the third round, which is fifty-two. So, part of why I need a subcommittee is, we have some sites from the third round that are not going to come to fruition, that we have to back them. And then we have to figure out how we are going to address the fourth round obligation. My office has already prepared a vacant land adjustment, that's already done. Um, so it's just a matter of, uh, meeting all the micro requirements, because it's not just a number. Then there are a series of micro requirements within that, there have to be so many family units, so many rental units, you could have a maximum number of senior units, there have to be so many requirements on requirements, and so this is why I'm going to need a committee to work with in this time period. Because my goal is to have the housing plan done by no later than June first. That way it gives us plenty of time to set up the hearing that will happen here on a planning board. But then also I have to make an appearance in front of the governing body, because it requires endorsement of the governing body, because it will contemplate expenditures, and unfortunately, this board doesn't have the authority to direct expenditures.
Darlene, does that housing plan then, is, is that equal to the housing element of the master plan?
Yes.
Okay, so it amends the master plan?
It's, yes, uh, and it will have to be accompanied by, for making any zoning changes anywhere. All those ordinances have to be drafted, we need a new spending plan. It's a volume of documents, um.
Do you, do you anticipate, um, and I know you'd love to anticipate this, but given the amount of court backlog that there's going to be due to the anticipated challenges in the state, um, and, you know, we talked about this last year, that the uh, timeline for all this is extremely tight. Um, do you anticipate them changing, which they did, I think in the previous round, if I'm not mistaken, changing some of these deadlines?
I am holding out hope, um, but what I could see happening is them saying, well, towns are more challenged, your date is still June thirtieth, because you know your number, towns that were challenged, uh, you may get a stay.
All right.
That, they may bifurcate this.
I think that's probably more likely, if, if at all.
Yeah, yeah, I could see that happening.
A question on the definition of affordable housing, if I decide to sell my house at a price level, that would qualify as affordable, right, under whatever the, the formula is. Now, does that then count as an affordable housing unit? In other words, I don't need to build something new. Any housing unit, depending on pricing cost, whether it's rental or purchase, could be an affordable housing unit, right, it's based on. So, I, I think there is somewhat of a misconception to some people, that means we have to build all this new stuff, which isn't the only method of, of gaining affordable housing.
Correct, so the, it's, there's a couple of things in order for it to, to check all the boxes. It would need to be rented or sold at an affordable price, those who are occupying it would need to meet the, the maximum income limits. And then, now in this round, the property would have to have a forty year, if it's rental, forty year, if it's sale, thirty year deed restriction. Um, those are, sort of, the, the biggest items that have to be checked, so it is, is it a lot of towns are realizing you cannot build your way out of this with rezone.
Right.
Yeah.
For the inclusionary market rate and affordable component.
Right, right.
And this is something that I want to start talking to the committee about, because you did a lot of rezoning in the third round. And I'm not really sure what is left to rezon, that is not already a single family neighborhood. I feel that all the, um, non-residential sites have essentially already been rezoned.
Okay, so if this question is too far, let's take this building. Uh, you know, French Town School, right, faces some challenges, it's a lovely structure with lots of space and capacity. Let's say we decided to take this building and either knock it down or renovate it and turn it into four affordable housing rental units and have council meetings and all that in the French Town School. Would that give us then for, and with the, you know, deed restrictions and, and the like and the pricing and that? That would give us for additional affordable housing units, correct?
Correct, and potentially depending on how that came into being, there's bonuses awarded for certain types of units and credits.
Great, thank you. I wonder if it might make sense, uh, when we were dealing with the last round, Juliet Hirsch had worked on a little flyer that still sits on the borough's website, I think, I wonder whether we should dust that.
Explains what.
Sort of an explainer.
Because one of the things that did happen in the last round, um, when we had our hearing, was, um, and, uh, between Juliet and Betsy, they were very good, um, but we did have, um, some folks uh, from the community that came that, um, fundamentally did not understand what affordable housing was. Um, and they were, um, not that there's anything wrong with Section Eight housing, but they were equating with Section Eight housing. And they thought that any affordable housing in the municipality was going to uh, be a horrible, horrible, terrible, very bad thing. You know, and, and the idea that that is not what the affordable housing is set up to do, and it's not the structure for the affordable housing, and honestly, even given the way that the affordable housing program is set up in the state of New Jersey, given the fact that we live in an extraordinarily rich county. Affordable housing in Hundred County is still pretty expensive housing, um, so, but this was, this was something that's definitely, um, uh, some, some members of the community, uh, struggled with that, so I think that's actually a really good idea as we go.
And it is payment, that'll be the reaction again, it's just, I think, so I think, I'm pretty darn sure it's still on the website, and, um, so I think just dusting it off.
Yeah, Gina, right, that's great, I think, you know, getting that education, that communication out there so that people know what it is. You know, fending off a lot of unnecessary strife is a wonderful idea.
Yeah, and we, 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 we won't find it all off, but it, but it might help. Um, but that is, that is a good idea, because that was definitely, um, um, I, I I do recall there was, um, uh, someone who from the community who started to speak in a, in a, a very prejudicial way, and, and, and I believe it was the attorney that just we just stopped that language, which was, which was good before it, um.
And we're in such a more calm.
Before the sentence, yes, thank you, um, before this, before the sentence got fully out of the person's mouth, we just sort of, um, took care of that, so. Um, so that's the affordable housing update, thank you very much. Um, and, um, you'll be in touch with me and the rest of the.
I will, I'm, I'm patiently just waiting out.
I understand, I understand. So the aging in place committee update, Brad was actually gonna give the update here this evening, um, but he, um, has come down with some horrible things, so uh, what I can tell you is that it does look like, um, we are going to get, uh, something, um, out of the grant, um, application we put in. Um, but the, uh, information we have so far is remarkably vague, and we're waiting for more clarity, and then it will have to go through council and, and be set up within the borough. So, um, right now, we're just sort of, um, waiting on that, until we can move forward on that. Um, but that is, that is, that is the good news with, with few details, because the details were really.
Yeah, and what we had said was that, in that grant, was that we would create, you know, that the council would create a committee. I'm assuming those of us who have sat on the planning board ones, if we wanted to re-up, we would. Um, and then it's that borough-wide committee that sort of leads the grant.
So, so we'll see where we go, but that's just, that's where we are on that. Um.
That's great.
So, um, good news, we're, we're, we're on track with the portal housing committee update, no challenges yet. And, uh, aging in place, it looks like we're gonna get something to help us with that. Never seen such a vague letter, anyhow, um, moving on to vouchers. What have we got for vouchers? I saw them in here. I've started to staple things together now, so I can actually find things, because that way my vouchers don't disappear. Is there a move to approve the vouchers? Thank you, Gina, is there a second? Thank you, uh, could I vote please to approve the vouchers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Yes. Uh, moving on to correspondence, council representative report and other related items. John Dougherty, what have you got for us?
Um, I think, you know, the discussion on affordable housing kind of covered what I would update on, um. We also at the last council meeting, you know, passed a, uh, approved a proposal from Colliers to, you know, support Darlene and her coworkers for the work that we need to go forward. So, um, yeah, nothing, nothing to add.
So we're actually going to pay them to do the affordable housing work, that's good, that's good. That, that will help us, that will help us quite a bit in reaching our, um, fourth round obligation, I think, or plan for that.
Lots of work to do.
Um.
The planner, yeah, keep the planners busy.
Right, I've got a couple of things here, um, there's also a cross-acceptance letter that is, uh, cross-acceptance package that needs to be put together, um, as I drop papers left and right. Um, so I have a cross-acceptance response template, this is for us to accept, uh, the council, um. Sorry, the county plan, um. State plan, sorry, uh, so Austin went to the meeting, uh, the county meeting and took some notes.
Who's Austin?
My staff.
Your staff, okay, so, uh, we, uh, theoretically, the deadline is, uh, March twenty-eighth, but apparently that is a soft deadline, um, there's actually quite a few documents that need to be put together for this, and then uh, it really needs to be approved, it needs at least to be run past the planning board, I should think, and then it needs to be approved through resolution by council. That's not all gonna happen by March twenty-eighth, so my goal is to have us put it together, look at this during our March meeting and refer it to council, so council can hopefully approve it, um, in their first meeting of April. Apparently, according to what Austin said at the county level, as long as, you know, you're making progress and you're gonna meet in a couple of weeks and approve it by March twenty-eighth, we'll be fine. So, um.
Did anything in the preliminary state plans change in terms of French Town, in terms of designations?
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think so, I looked at it when it first came out.
The map has not changed.
Right.
But what I would note is that the entire borough is, uh, planning area five, which environmentally is sensitive. However, they have, um, the northeast corner, uh, one property as parks. And if they're going to keep that category, to me, then they should add a Thompson tract.
Yeah, yeah.
Purchased.
Yeah.
In the meantime, and so one of my, um, questions is beyond the cart, which is being required in every county by, uh, all the towns. Is, um, there's an opportunity for towns to submit comments on the state plan. And so I don't know if that's something you want to do, uh, because the, the court is asking you about consistency between the state plan and your documents.
That's the cross-acceptance response.
Sorry, yes, up there acting. Because I'm pushing a grocery cart, uh. The, the state plan, uh, this is the first time it's been adopted in twenty-three years, so it's long overdue. But when you dive into the document, there's a, there's, there's some generic concerns, like the state plan map isn't attached. Yet it's referred to, um, I actually, after often went to the Hundred and County meeting, I went to the Highlands meeting, so they're in the process right now holding, there's, uh, hearings required in the state plan process to adopt the document, so they have to hold a hearing in every county plus the three um, planning regions, and so at the Highlands meeting, they said that um, there's the cart process, there's also then the comment process where anyone can comment, it could be the borough, it could be individual residents, anyone, um, they'll review all of those comments, they will not respond to them. And then there will be updates to the plan in late summer is their anticipation. Then an updated version will be released, there'll be a second round potential comments, and then their goal is to adopt it by the end of the year. Um, which I think is a very aggressive timeline, one thing to be mindful of is that the amended Fair Housing Act changed, um, the requirements of the housing plan. And one of those changes is that we have to say in the new housing plan how our housing plan is consistent with the state plan. Which I think is a little bit of a hard ask, because how can I tell you if it's consistent if it hasn't been adopted yet? Um, so the state plan is a long read, but I will tell you, there's, there's one section in there that concerned me, talks about how zoning is antiquated and that towns are, doesn't use the word ill-equipped, but essentially that's what they're saying, we're, we're ill-equipped to handle zoning. Right, which I have a lot of towns that take offense to that, um, and I'm not really sure what, why that's even in there, um.
Well, if we, I mean, I just maybe being. Well, if we, I mean, I just maybe being too kind, but the concept of zoning being sold and, you know, new. Technology and lifestyles and all that changing that, maybe that's what they are referring to. As opposed to be specifically ill-equipped and that you're not capable of discussing it, but.
So they need to try harder, uh, and, and so there also is a housing goal, which is written. In my opinion, like a blank check, build housing everywhere, which contradicts with their environmental goals. Um, and so some of my towns have asked my office to write comments, others have not. It is up to the borough which way you want to proceed. I just want to, you know, let you know that, because they said it, the Highlands meeting, essentially if we don't receive comments. Then the assumption is that everybody's fine with the state plan as written.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, I may be reaching out to one or more of you to help me, um, wrestle with the cart. Um, in the next month, because there's, uh, we need to make sure that we have, uh, supporting documentation as well as, and gather to. Together any comments that we might want to make, um, on this. So, um, uh, brace it out for me to reach out. Um, yeah.
To benefit of folks who might be watching, do you have info on if folks want to send comment individuals? You said individuals can comment.
Individuals can comment if they Google, um, New Jersey state plan. That will get them to the website, and at the bottom of the website, there is a, um, there's two different ways to do it. One, you can either email them, or there is, uh, like a form you can fill out.
What does CART stand for again?
It stands for the cross-acceptance response template. Which is this thing that I have in my little fingers with the bright pink post-it note on it. Um, this is, uh, this is so it didn't get lost in amongst other papers that I have, because that's what I need to, um, work on to get that done. Other things, um, I was hoping that Brad would give us an update on the town hall meeting. I was out of town for that this weekend.
Yeah, I wasn't able to. I was there.
Uh, well, well attended?
It was well-attended, uh, standing room only, there were, uh, the. Chairs were all full, out to side, people sitting, standing, uh, so.
We'll get, uh, we'll get, uh, Brad to maybe give us an update on that next month, uh, but I'm glad it went very well. Um, is there anything that you want to particularly want to call out that happened?
No, uh, you know, he went through the list of projects that are on tap, infrastructure projects for the year. People were very positive and in general enthusiastic. There were some questions about, uh, traffic, especially with the bridge, but, uh, all in all. It was an upbeat, uh, very positive session.
Great, great. Um, I've talked to Brad about, he's kind to, uh. And are working together to find a new class two member, uh, since Mike Reno has, has stepped down. Um, so that is a very specific member, that is, that is a, uh. Municipal employee. Um, you may notice that in a small town like Frenchtown, that's a very short list of people, so. Uh, Brad and I are in conversations about that, we're gonna see what we can do about that. Um, I also do have, um, and I don't remember the gentleman's name. And I haven't written down home, but I have word from. John Demblicher, he's recommending, uh, a gentleman in town to, because we're, we're down in alternate. Um, so, uh, which was my bad, I, I let that go by for a couple of months this fall while I was otherwise occupied, so, um, I'm gonna hopefully interview that gentleman. See if we can actually bring ourselves up to a full cohort. Um, I talked about the bridge closing, that, um, I think it's, it's important that. Um, Frenchtown and Frenchton, Frenchtonians, uh, do what they can to help support their local businesses. Um, to that, and one of the things that I've been in conversation with, um, the mayor and the council president about is. Um, working, much like during COVID, when there were some emergency rules that went into place that allowed. Um, outdoor dining, for example, and some other things. One of the things, I've also been talking to Darlene about this. Um, one of the things that I'm, uh, proposing, I'm going to try to work forward on is coming up with. Uh, uh, a short-term emergency wayfinding system. In Frenchtown to make it easier to find businesses. Uh, we already have some businesses that have approached us with some signage. To make their businesses easier to locate, particularly the businesses that are not in the central business district, um. And, um, the idea of this would be to put in something for twelve months. I know the bridge isn't supposed to be out that long, but projects, projects do those things. Um, this would be in place for about twelve months. During that period of time, we would finally. Get around to redoing the borough sign ordinance, which has been badly, uh, in need of being looked at for many years.
Randy, are you, are you thinking an app, or are you thinking structures?
Structures.
Oh, structures. Now, would you consider an app?
Well, I think anything we could do would be lovely, but yes, but. Businesses would like some signs.
Right, okay.
Um, uh, they would like, um, to be able to be found by people coming through town, because we're, I think we're gonna be in danger if we don't. Um, go out of our way to support some of the businesses in Frenchtown. At the end of the year, we may find ourselves with a lot less businesses in Frenchtown. Um, so, um. So that's. On the, um, that's on the radar, um. Ted figured out that after we did all the work on the pre-renewal and replacement ordinance last year. Um, unless this has been resolved since then, that the application that was supposed to be attached, all that never happened, so there is no application. So, um, that is also something that we need to, um. Maybe go back to the committee, uh, I don't remember if that was actually, it may have been the Shade Tree Commission guys that were gonna do that, I don't remember. But we have to figure out what's going on, because there's no actual application that goes with that, so we have to get that done.
That's regarding trees.
Trees.
Okay.
And. And last, and last but not least, um. Uh, Sam was asking whether or not, you know, just to reduce paper, if we wanted to continue having. Paper packets at the table, um, or if we want to go with electric cop, electric copies. Now, Steve and I were talking about it, Steve and Darlene and I were talking about it just as before the meeting started this evening, and. There is, there are pros and cons to actually having folks. Members of the board sitting in front of their computers, because, you know, are you looking at your documents? Are you Googling? Are you emailing the guy? So. Um, Steve and I are gonna get our heads together and try to get some guidance on that. We may still wind up with paper packets in front of us that we scribble on. Who knows? But we're going to try to figure that out so that we do it in the most, um. Transparent, um, and, and legal way, uh, because there has been a discussion of ethics at legal municipalities meetings. When you've got folks that are, uh, sitting at the planning board. Dias, if you will, um, and they're, you know, what are they doing on their phone?
We could do optional, for example, I being, uh, old, I think it's the technical term, print stuff out, right? So I don't need then another copy, because now I have two copies. So you could, you know, so for those who don't have printers or don't want to print, you could do, but say, you know, give the option, it's like, nah, I'll bring my own paper.
But we may, we may be moving forward to having less paper at any rate at the meeting. Certainly. When we have large applications, we're still gonna be getting the large plats, so that we can all try to unfold fifteen of them at the same table, which is always entertaining. Um, but it, it does make it much, much easier to look at. Um, than it does trying to simply zoom in on a computer screen, so, um, I think.
Hey Randy, I just wanted, uh, if you could, um, uh, just get everybody on the right page in terms of what we learned this month about. Signing up for NJPO.
Yes, that was on here. Alright, so, uh, so the New Jersey Planning Officials, which I'm actually, this is sort of embarrassing. Um, during, uh, I think it was during transition, but I'm really not sure, I'm not even sure it wasn't before Sam got here. Somehow we, we, we missed paying some dues somewhere along the line. Um, so the last copy of the planner that we had gotten, I believe, was August. Uh, they put out several of those a year, they put out a lot of different, um, was it through NJPO? Um, we are, we are paid up again, so. Um, but there was, uh, some really great, and Jean called my attention to this, because I had. I had missed, there's some really great, different things, it was floodwaters and stormwater and, you know, uh, environmental concerns.
Yeah.
So I, we, I did send out, and I muffed it when I sent it out, because, um. Just personally, it's been a very difficult month for me for the last month, but I did send it out, so you all had, and, um. You can follow those links and look at those videos. You do not need to pay to be an individual member.
But we should have Sam sign us up.
Sam, yes, so you need to go through Sam, but you're all paid members of NJPO, because we join as a. As a borough.
And you can, because like, then I went on. Signed up sites, like I can look and see what other kind of offerings they have, so anyone can do that.
Yeah, absolutely, great, you know, um, I mean, I go, I go in there because I'm a board member, and I didn't actually, because I'm a board member, I was going in sort of a different portal in it.
And they stuff all the time, there's some we wouldn't know.
Yeah, it hadn't occurred to me that, um, we had, uh, because somehow the board didn't actually catch up with the fact that I wasn't paid up somehow, so.
But our rule of thumb, rule of thumb should be to ask Sam to sign this up if we want to do.
Yes, go, go, go through Sam, um, but, uh, but they do have a lot of great stuff, and as, as Jean said, you can just. You know, get your own log in, go in and, and see what's, what's there.
So, sorry, for both this and whatever ends up getting decided about, uh, electronics, is there a way for us to just? Down somewhere, as like how this board operates and makes sure that new folks. New folks doing, because it sounds like we're gonna have probably at least one more person joining, just like onboarding, because I.
Yeah, because that information, that information, you're right, that information is nowhere. Those are all things that you just sort of absorb through your skin going to meeting, and that seems like, um.
I mean, it seems like most of this stuff you're just expected to.
Well, they tell you at the, your first training, but then you're.
Well, they train at the training, right, and, you know, there's. In our planning board book, that tells you about, you know, how, how the board is set up and all those good things, um, but you know what, I'm gonna turn that back on you.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have you make a list of what those lovely things would be, that would be really handy to just. Welcome to the planning board, here are things that.
I will.
That you should know.
Do what I can.
Okay.
And I'm probably gonna get some stuff wrong.
Well, that's right, uh, just, 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 just a list so we can fill things in.
I'll get updated on the website, is that.
And with NJPO, you can also follow them on like LinkedIn, and then like when they have trainings coming up, you'll see it on, you know, LinkedIn.
I mean, I, I think I am.
Okay. But then if you sign up online, then you'll get their emails.
Yeah. Right, so make a list of things that, that you think that new members should know, that have, have been trickling into you. Um, and we'll see if we can't come up with some sort of a cheat sheet for new members, which I think, do think would be very helpful.
And just one little thing on the iss- issue of trying to make sure our businesses are doing okay in signs and stuff.
Yes.
I just, um, want to make sure that we're sensitive to the fact that we happily live adjacent to a state park. And that people seem to think that they can just do what they like in terms of signs and stuff on that.
Understood.
And it seems to be proliferating to me as I walk, take walks.
Okay, well, that, that is.
I know it's not our problem, but it's a problem.
It is a problem, and it is a problem that the state finds to, right, but yes, you can't just, um.
We shouldn't encourage.
We should not encourage it, no. Um, people cannot just go, um, putting up their own.
Mushroom signs.
And, and other things, um, a permanent signage in state parks, that's just not really a legal thing. Um, so. It's a, you know, Darlene, you and I, I have conversations with Darlene, I always bring up really interesting things that are going on, and I almost always make her laugh, which is a handy thing. Um, even in the midst of affordable housing crazy, you know? Anyhow, is there, is there anything else before I ask if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Gina, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Nicely done.
Uh, all in favor of returning, say aye. All, uh, all. All opposed, thank you. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.